You're welcome. I will call this regular meeting of the Northridge Board of Education to order on Tuesday, February twenty second, twenty two, twenty twenty two. That's a happy Tuesday, folks. That's two twenty two, twenty two, Tuesday. And you know, I s- when I saw I had the count doing it, so you know. But anyway, we'll start with pledge allegiance. It's seven thirty two, I believe. Six thirty two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Mr. Lewis, please call roll.
Yes, Mr. Shrock's absent. He called in to let us know he would not be here. Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Present.
Mrs. Krieger.
Here.
Mrs. Bamberlin.
Present.
Very good. Our mission and value Viking value statements. Our mission is to is empowering all students to reach their fullest potential. Our Viking values are trust, leadership, communication, collaboration, accountability, integrity, and respect. And we do adhere to the see something, say something campaign. And 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 anyone who has a copy of the agenda, we've changed our agenda formats. We're in the process of transitioning to something called board docs. And it's a much smoother way of 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 doing minutes and doing agendas and leading into minutes. And so the technological age is catching up with us. It's only been available how long? I don't know. A long time. But anyway, item one point five, instead of number five, is a set of minutes or several sets of minutes from the special meeting on January tenth, the organizational meeting on January tenth that followed that, that the that actually preceded the special meeting, and then the regular meeting of January eighteenth, twenty twenty two. I have two, two small changes, one to the special minutes and one to the organizational minutes. In the special minutes, near the, near the bottom of the minutes, it, it, it talks about where Ms. Krieger joined, would join the board. But before she, before she actually was seated, I think we should indicate that the oath of office was administered to her, for her, however that, however that gets worded. That's important that it be noted. And it did happen. And then in the organizational minutes, in the nomination of the vice president section, the minute, the draft minutes indicate that, that, that Mrs. Bamberlin moved to close nominations on her own nomination. And I know that, that, that could not have happened. And Mr. Wiggins has his notes from the meeting. And in consulting those, it appears that, that I was the one who made that motion. I had, I know I had nominated Jama, so it's not surprising. I, I, I seem to remember. We can verify that with the tape and but those are the two changes that I had. Are there any other changes, corrections, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the, the minutes in two cases as modified?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Motion by Mr. Wiggins, seconded by Mrs. Bamberlin to approve three sets of minutes to as modified. Mr. Lewis, please call a roll.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mrs. Bamberlin.
Yes.
And the motion passes four zero. Adoption of the agenda, I'll ask our administrators to provide a brief summary of their consent agenda items for the night. As customary, Mr. Lewis, we'll start with you.
You got a page a little further back than we used to.
Right.
Board members were asking to approve the monthly financial reports as approved by the finance committee. And
Yep. Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Lewis about his consent agenda item? Hearing none, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, we have item number seven point one authorize our membership of Ohio High School Athletic Association for the twenty two, twenty three school year. Recommendation seven point two to rescind non athletic supplemental contracts for following individuals that were previously approved, but then some, some in clerical error, some in the fact that those didn't carry through. So I'll just explain it quickly if I may. Carmen DeBolt was, was approved as high school musical aid. That should have actually read middle school musical aid. But instead of doing it as a supplemental contract, we are doing it. Sorry, I'm on page six of fourteen, item seven point two. Mrs. Bamberlin.
Okay.
Right there in the middle of the page. So Carmen DeBolt was initially approved back in October as high school, middle, high school musical aid. It should have been the middle school musical aid, but it did need to be approved in the first place because she's a contracted service instead of a supplemental contract. Caitlin DeBolt was originally going to be the high school musical aid, but she's had a change in her schedule and not able to do it. So she is resigning from that position. Cheryl McCorny did, did not, we did not have mock trial this year due to the dates that takes place normally November, December, January. So that didn't take place this year. Seven point three is approval of non supplemental positions. So with the resignation of Katie DeBolt, Danny Hep is going to serve as the assistant musical director with that position. Prove supplemental coaches. Just our spring, spring coaches there. Seven point five is substitute classified substitutes. Seven point six, there's just one name listed there, Carla. Approval of volunteers. Again, great to have volunteers back working with us again. These happen to be all in, in the realm of athletics. We have FMLA leave to approve in seven point seven. And we do have a couple resignations this evening. Bethany, who has served as our speech pathologist, mainly at the middle school, high school, is choosing to resign at this time for some medical issues. And Jody Hef has decided to retire at the end of the school year, our current middle school, high school choir director. We have, sorry that the page, page nation is off on this. Seven point nine. Correction to Jamie Harold, who has been working in second shift custodian, correction for the correct step on her subforce. I believe she was inadvertently approved at, at step one. Approval of Ohio STEM network class, classroom grant for five thousand dollars to Laura Roberts, who also happens to be here in the audience with us tonight. So congratulations to Laura on that Ohio STEM learning network grant. And those are the consent agenda items this evening.
Thank you much. Schmidt, I just have one question. It's rhetorical. I assume there's still an alternative to the High School Athletic Association?
There is not. If our students want to participate in the, in the tournaments, that is, that is the avenue we have to pursue.
That's what I understand. I know, so. Any other questions for Mr. Schmidt about his consent agenda items tonight? Not, I do have one thing that I want to change in terms of order. And since I noticed it, I might have done it, got objections, but I would like to revise the order of two items. The business initiated, initiated by members of the board and item ten, I would like to put after unscheduled visitors. It's a matter of practice. I just think that in, in the event that, that one of our visitors were ever to have a recommendation to us that we want to do a drop, I think that, I think that we should have a chance to adopt it on the face of our agenda. We can always take things out of order, but it just, I think it flows better. So that's my suggestion. As we, I think it might have been that way on the old one, but I don't know that. But it just jumped off the page at me tonight. Okay. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as slightly modified? That bottom of page.
Yeah, but to, yeah, top of page two.
Oh, that's where the blank is, yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I will second.
Motion by Mrs. Bamberlin, seconded by Mr. Wiggins to approve modified agenda. All those in favor of adopting the modified agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Carries by voice vote without dissent. All right, scheduled visitors and staff comments. Schmidt, we have two scheduled, at least two. I don't know how we count. I don't know how we count it. I think two are maybe related, but.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Three different.
Two or three.
Yes. So we'll start off with Open Roads Renewables this evening, who had an opportunity recently to present to the finance committee and asked to share some things with us publicly tonight. They're here to talk about the proposed Harvey Soul Solar Project in Hartford Township. And so turn things over to, to Doug and Samantha.
Yeah, yes, that's great.
Yeah, and if you could.
There's a button at the bottom.
Push the white button there to turn it green. That way the people at home can hear you. Perfect. Thank you. Can you hear me all right? Great. Well, thanks for taking the time tonight. I'm sure you have a busy schedule as always here. That agenda alone seems like you got a lot going on. So won't take any more time than you need me to. But my name's Doug Hurling. I'm vice president of Open Road Renewables. With me tonight is Samantha Sawmiller, who heads development of the Harvey Solar Project here in Licking County. So really just wanted to introduce the project to y'all, put some, put some names and faces to what we're doing out here. Give you some information about the process that we're involved in now, and then really kind of the impact on the school district potentially should this project go forward. So next slide, please. So who we are. Again, I'm from Open Road Renewables. We're a solar development company based in Austin, Texas. We've been working here in Ohio for the last five years. We have a project that has completed construction down in Brown County and another under construction down in Highland County. Others around the country, Maryland, Virginia, Texas, that are being built as we speak. But really our focus is on Ohio. We have a team, we have a team based in Columbus and a lot of other folks like myself who spend a lot of time flying in to be here on the ground to meet with folks like you, with landowners, with neighbors to our project and with local state elected officials. Here on this slide, and we have larger versions of this map available if you should want one, is just an overview map that is needlessly complicated, showing the footprint of this project. And that's more for your reference. If there are questions about it, happy to walk through that. But it's to give you an idea of the scale and the location of the project in Hartford Township. Up in the northwest corner of the county. The project is fully in Northridge LSD's territory. We are in no other school district. And essentially fully in Hartford Township, a small portion of the project is in Bennington. Next slide, please. Yeah. Sure. The project will end up occupying about twenty six hundred acres at maximum. It's likely to be less than that, given efficiency of siting. But we try to permit what we call the maximum footprint of the project. So the state can evaluate that scenario, and then we shrink from there based on further constraints and engineering decisions. Of course. So Harvey Solar is what's called a photovoltaic solar project. It's the same solar panels you see on a roof of a house or a store or out in the field at a dairy, anything like that. It's a technology that's been around for a long time, well over fifty years. It's, you know, it's what powered a lot of the early spacecraft. And it's been powering parts of this country for quite some time now. Our, our project is going to use what's called a single access tracking system. That's where it follows the sun from east to west over the course of the day. So long north, south rows of panels that begin facing east in the morning and track, track the sun throughout the day, then reset. Those are mounted on steel posts that are driven into the ground. A key question we get a lot is, won't there be a lot of concrete or anything? And really, once we drive these posts into the ground and the entire site's vegetated, you're, there's, there's very few impermeable surfaces that are created. We add a couple access roads, things like that. But generally, what we're looking at is a very, you know, it's a very passive land use at the end of the day. Here is just some, a lot of this is really just take home knowledge about the project that I don't, that I won't get into at the moment. But again, to give you context of where we are near the village of Hartford. Next slide, please. What's important to know now, and you might have heard a little bit about it, is projects in Ohio of, of this scale and smaller down to fifty megawatts go through what's called the Ohio Power Sitting Board permitting or certification process. So we submit an application to the state detailing our impacts ecologically, socioeconomically to, to roads, to drain tile, to stormwater, everything. And in a very large application that the state then reviews. So we began that process in August when we submitted our application. The state's had about six coming on seven months to review that application. And likely by this Friday, they'll issue what's called a staff report of recommendation. And that report details their findings about our application. It distills about three binders that are that thick into something much more palatable, but still references that application and other work that we have done to answer their questions. So that puts us right here at the staff report. What's coming up after that is a public hearing. That public hearing will occur here at Northridge High School. I assume someone's been notified, but the state organizes that hearing. It's not a public, it's not like a public meeting or anything where we're answering questions like we can here. It's where folks have a chance in front of an administrative law judge to provide testimony, their thoughts on why they support the project, why they don't, concerns about really any aspect of it, that the state can then factor into its citing decision. Following that, so that's on, I believe, on the fourteenth. And then on April sixth, there will be the start of a hearing in, that's typically in person in Columbus. That will instead be virtual for, I guess, ease of scheduling, possibly still COVID concerns from the state. And that'll typically run three to five days of, of usually in person, but in this case, virtual testimony and cross examination. There are a number of local entities that have intervened in the process. That's where they take a formal seat at the table when we're negotiating conditions on the project, such as how stormwater is handled, or what, what a fence looks like, how much landscaping there needs to be. So the county is heavily involved in that. There's a group of neighbors that are heavily involved in that, among others, to make sure that, you know, all, all folks are represented and heard. And then sometime this fall, we'd expect a decision from the board. Take some time for them to process all that information from that staff report to the comments, to that hearing, that, that evidentiary hearing, to put all that information into a final decision. That's then an up or down vote on the project. So that's what we're working through now. That doesn't necessarily involve the school, but it's something that's happening on the side right now. That's critically important whether the project moves forward and what form the project takes as it does. So and that, and that power sitting board makes the decision, that's some kind of a subset of what's called the Public Utility Commission of Ohio. But in this case, it's the head of the PUCO, as we call it, along with the head of the USDA, Ohio EPA, Development Services, forgetting quite a few here, ODNR, a member of the public who's typically an engineer, some non voting members who are state representatives and state senators. So there's, so that board then really determines the fate of the project. Next slide, thank you. One of the reasons that I wanted to come in here was one of the economic development mechanisms that Ohio has come up with is called the pilot program colloquially, payment in lieu of taxes. Officially, it's called the Qualified Energy Project Tax Exemption, which is quite a mouthful. But the ORC code is referenced here to describe that program. But it's administered by the ODSA and is available to many different electric generating technologies. And the county has the end decision of whether a project gets a pilot or not. The way that it works is instead of paying, you know, the assessed value taxes like you would normally, we pay seven thousand dollars per megawatt of project nameplate capacity per year for the life of the project. That seven thousand per, per megawatt gets distributed as taxes do now on that same property, that same twenty six hundred acres or so. And then there's an additional two thousand dollars per megawatt per year that goes directly to the county general fund. So and then, sorry, just making sure I'm not losing anything. And then the approval or denial again is at the hands of the commissioner as to whether that goes forward. Doug, one thing that came up a question when you, when you presented to the finance committee, and I heard you say again, the, the megawatt per nameplate, do you want to, that's different than megawatts generated, right? Yeah, that's a good, that's a good distinction. So this is based on the nameplate capacity to the project, which I meant is, which I think I mentioned is three hundred and fifty megawatts. So that's not what, what the project's producing in a year or anything. That is just the size of the project. And that's what they base that calculation on, not, not any fluctuation and whether you're producing more or less energy in a given year. It's just on that set amount that the project is rated at. So there's no, no, no impact if we have a down year or something. You are still getting the same level of funding. Ohio used to have kind of a utility production tax, but got rid of that, I think about a decade ago. Good question. As I mentioned, it's Harvey is a three hundred and fifty megawatt nameplate facility, which results in annual funding at that seven thousand dollar per megawatt level of two point four or five million dollars per year. That, that same, the property where the project's currently located generates about seventy four thousand dollars per year in taxes. So you know, that's, it ends up being an increase of two point three, seven million dollars per year. So that two point four or five million is not completely additional because it's replacing that seventy four thousand. And then I've included a breakdown here for you, both on the annual share and the total over the lifetime of the project. Should the project go for the full forty years? And critical here again is that, that, that distribution of the funding is based on where the project's located. So based on those mileage rates here. So you can see the estimated breakdown here as mileage rates change. This can fluctuate slightly, but typically you'll have fairly, fairly consistent movement within those mileage rates. I could always be wrong, but that's, that's what we've usually witnessed, that there's not very large departure, because I don't think most folks would vote for it. And that's, that's, that's really kind of how the pilot applies to this project. And one of the, it's one of the chief economic development opportunities that these projects present. It's a tremendous influx of tax dollars into a community that goes to, while some, some communities don't always need it, it is usually a, a nice, a nice benefit from having the project nearby. So for the schools, that could mean one point four million a year coming in, replacing some subset of that seventy four thousand dollars per year that they're currently getting off that property.
Thanks. One of the things we discussed at finances is that it's showing at the full value the school would be receiving now, but it is minus what our, our take was now on the seventy four thousand. So we'll have to make sure that we, when we're all talking out in public, that we're using the number minus, you know, the one forty four minus, the one forty four, five twenty, minus what we're bringing in right now. And we haven't, I haven't run that yet.
And, and, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
And, and while there's a number of significant figures on here, for those of you that remember your high school math, that's, this is, you know, That's, this is, you know. Our exact best guess at the moment. And I don't want to say guess in a, in a negative way. Just because things can change in terms of that share, share of revenue. So those numbers can, can move a little bit, but not, not a tremendous amount.
There was a lot of discussion on the twenty mil floor during the finance committee. Could you review that for everybody?
I'd, I'd, I'd be happy to. So. And I, I'm learning about the twenty mil floor, but it's not different than other situations that we have run into. And the concern there is typically that. With, so with this coming, this money. Be coming in. And for those of you who've learned a bit about the pilot, the underlying property where the project is, does, does become exempt of taxes. And in, in a vacuum, that would mean that. With the twenty mil floor, that neighboring property owners or anyone else in that. In the tax jurisdiction would feel their rate go up a little bit, you know, probably twenty-five cents or a dollar or something.
It would be that full seventy-four thousand that you talked about.
Yeah, or, or, or the portion that applies to the twenty mil floor, call it. In this case, probably about thirty-five thousand dollars or something would get split up. But to.
No, that's seventy-four is everybody.
Yeah, so seventy-four is what gets split between everybody here. So it's not just the school, so.
Seventy-four is everybody all in, and then look at our, you can take our percentage of, and break it into it. Fifty-eight point nine six of the seventy-four.
And, and so that's a situation that we obviously will avoid, because that's not. That's not how anyone wants this to work. No one's taxes should go up as a result of this project. So what we have done before is, and, and this was in the case of a county that had a, or a school district that had a different issue. They had a number of fixed sum levies that they'd placed out there, which operates in a very similar way. There's a certain amount you need to fund each year. And if you're reducing the amount of property that's funding it, then that gets spread out to everyone else. What, what we did in that case was, there was a work with the treasurer and the, and the county auditor. To determine the amount of those fixed sum levies each year. So that we would then replace that amount of, of funding that is a perceived loss. To add that in a, at tax time, so that there is no, there's no missed money, that there's no change for everyone else. So that's, that's how we address the twenty mil floor. There's certainly other ways to do it. But that, that's, that would be our proposal, and we'll certainly figure that out well before the project.
So you'd work with the county auditor to make sure that that all works out. And I know that we have a bond that was passed a few years back. That's a fixed sum item. I don't think it's subject to twenty mil floor, but again, it has a cap. It's, it's going to raise what it's supposed to raise from day one through retirement of the bonds.
Yeah, exactly. So working with the county auditor and the treasurer in tandem. Typically, it ends up being something between us and the school. The auditor. Doesn't have the ability to sign off on anything like that. So it'd be us working with y'all, with the finance committee, et cetera, to figure out the best, the best way for that to work. So that there isn't any kind of negative impact to neighbors, that this is just a good, a good thing in terms of the funding. In isolation. Hope that helps answer the question. It's, it's certainly a complex issue.
It does. Neighbors is kind of a funny way to phrase it though, because the way our district is spread out. The people that are all the way down on Broad Street, for example, and the other side of Patasco wouldn't think of themselves as neighbors of, of, of the Hartford Fairgrounds.
So sure, we'll, we'll, we'll call it the Northridge Community. Yeah, so, yeah, so we, we don't want members of the Northridge Community to be having an undue burden. Because of the presence of the project. So that's something that we are, that we will absolutely work with y'all to ensure is not the case. We don't, we don't need that.
Like to share with the board that Scott and I met first. To go over our concerns, and that was, and they addressed all of our concerns in this presentation. And that was important to us to talk about. What would be happening to those taxes, and they're addressing it head on. And I've been very transparent about it. Now I actually had the experience in Perry.
It was in, it was in Preble County.
I always get it wrong. Preble. Why do I want to call it Perry? And Preble, yeah, they're bees. But anyway, they, they were able to do the same thing there and. Be able to tell us how that was working. So we appreciated that. And one, that they listened, and two, that they came through with addressing it.
Absolutely. It looks like I did have a bullet for that on the next slide here, and I think we hit most of it, but. I'm going to go to the great. Or, yeah, slide seven here, great. So one, one. Other element here that we did not get into yet is the Ohio's school, school funding formula. Or I don't know the exact right name for it, but. The need-based funding. So, and I know that the, and, and there's been a major update to how that's calculated. And y'all still don't have all the information on how that works. It might not even be approved yet. But what's key about how, how, how that formula works and how it's worked in the past, and is expected to continue working in future. Is that under the pilot, your need-based funding is not affected. Pilot money is purely additive to what you are receiving already. In the absence of the pilot agreement. There is a direct impact to your need-based funding. And we are working with. Columbus-based Howard Fleeter and Associates, who are some of the leading. School finance economists on this kind of stuff. And once they have the inputs, I'm sure you'll be getting them at a similar time. We'll be working to calculate just what that impact could be. Just because in the event that we don't get the pilot agreement for one reason or another, we certainly want to know. What the impact is to the district, so we can let you, you all know how, how things would look in that scenario too. If I had that today, I'd certainly provide it. But I think we have a good idea of, that the number would like that. That there would be a significant offset, for sure, in that situation. And the way these projects in the absence of a pilot are taxed is there's a, like any. Like anything in like a manufacturing plant or, or, or equipment, there's a, a depreciation curve. That, you know, pretty much that falls off a cliff over a few years. So you do get higher, potentially higher amounts upfront. Without. Without the pilot, but then plateaus much lower for the life of the project, given that. That asset becomes depreciated fairly quickly. And when you factor in the school finance impacts as well. We think it does paint a good picture for why the pilot is important, especially for school districts. But in terms of working with y'all, we certainly want to make sure that. There's open lines of communication, especially on fixed sum levy, twenty mil floor. If there are questions about the project in general. We're always happy to answer those, and other ways that we can work with the Northridge Community. In order to provide, you know, any educational materials about what it is we're doing. Solar in general, opportunities, once the project's up and running, we are all ears. So please, please do let us know any needs y'all have, and we'll, we'll certainly work with you. And just so you know, in that, in that folder, I had a couple fact sheets about the project there and solar in general. And there's kind of a glossy booklet that's from our public information meeting back in the fall. That contains a whole kind of what we call solar one oh one. At the back of what the components are, how construction progresses. And, and really other char- characteristics about the project. Happy to get into some of that if folks are curious or have questions about it, but thought I'd, thought I'd spare you more solar for tonight.
I say one, one thing I, and forgive me if we touched on this, but in working with the project. You're working with landowners who are interested in partnering with you and leasing the land, so those farmers would. Maintain their land, and after the forty-year period. Recalls for, for the land to be returned to farmable land.
Yeah, like, like I talked about, vast majority of the land that's in this project. Is leased. We are not an owner of farmland. So the folks who are farming it now, many have put a portion of their property into the project. For like a multitude of reasons you can imagine, whether it's. An escape from commodity markets partially, or, you know, a hedge against the future nest egg for future generations. But what's key is that because this project is not, you know, covering, covering the ground and. In a massive housing development or parking lots or tons of concrete. That, that the project is designed to be easily removable at the end of its operational life. We've made a commitment that will fully fund a bond to decommission the project. And that bond will be adjusted over time to, you know, reflect inflation, as we're all painfully aware of at the moment. And to reflect changes in labor costs, everything else. That bond is not taken into account. The value of the material being pulled out of the ground, its salvage value, is purely what it costs to take that all out and restore that. And, and restore the property to agricultural condition. And that's something that no landowner would sign an agreement if that wasn't the case. There's always the chance that maybe folks want to go on past the forty-year operational term of the project. But that's at their election. We have no ability to compel anyone to do that. If, if, if people want to. Out, then that's the direction it goes. So, yeah, we've been working with them for some time.
It goes the full forty years, I guess. By then, your hair is going to look a lot like mine.
Long time.
Looking at, at prospects for this to happen, it sounds like the, the pilot. Is something that the county commissioners would approve, if I understood you correctly. And it looks to me like the county, the county would receive. Just a little bit north of nine hundred thousand dollars is their. Their two-ninths of, be a larger figure than the three point one five, it'd be. You know, basically that'd be divided by seven and then multiplied by two, and I get about a little over nine hundred thousand, so. It's probably nine hundred thousand reasons they're going to approve it.
I, I mean, like, they, like, they certainly have an interest in, in going that way. And, you know, there, there are certainly reasons that they might not want to, but there are other things I didn't talk about the pilot that are reasons to approve it. It binds us to do eighty percent in state labor. It forces us to, I mean, force is not the right word, but it makes it a requirement that we. Work with EMS, fire, police to provide equipment and training. And then to work with the engineer on a road use and maintenance agreement to ensure that roads during. Construction are improved, return to their previous condition or better. And working with the joint vocational school or local university as well on funding and programming. So pilot has other benefits there too, that I didn't, that I neglected to mention. So, yeah, and the state designed all of that. We don't have any hand in how this works. It's just a program they put together. Presumably with the input of the Commissioners Association, but. That's, that's, that's how it's meant to operate. Yeah, and, and in terms of the OPSB, it's, it's, it's certainly not a black box. They try to make it a very transparent process. But, you know, we don't have a crystal ball on how they'll decide anything. So we're, we're certainly working hard to make this a success, but there could always be surprises.
In your presentation at the finance committee meeting, you, I thought was interesting, who do you sell the electric to?
Yeah, so unlike like a large gas plant or coal plant, we're not just selling as it's produced into the grid. Usually we're, we sell to a large, long-term buyer. Usually it can be. Oftentimes, it can be a corporation, can be a municipality, can be a utility. But in the past, our projects have sold to power to Amazon or Walmart, Facebook. I think John Deere at one point. So there's, like, there's a lot of different companies out there that have. That have goals to procure renewable energy. It's a citing decision for a lot of companies now, I believe. Intel cited. Based on their ability to procure renewable energy in Ohio as well. That was a key criteria for their citing. Other companies do the same. And that's not just because they think it will make people feel good. I mean, I would not buy a laptop or something because it said Intel on it, and I knew they did that. They do it because it's a long-term hedge against energy prices. Because solar has become competitive and the price that it's offered at, they can. Feel good long-term that they're buying power for fifteen or twenty years, that they know what their price is. Kind of like the pilot.
I thought that was interesting, and the finance committee meeting wanted the board to hear it. So thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to mention one thing. I, since the inception of this project and learning about it. Obviously, many months prior to this presentation to this board. One of my concerns has been the perception. Of the level of engagement with the school district with this project. I just kind of wanted to clarify that, you know, this really is the start of the conversation. I, I, I'm concerned that over time, that. Our, our community, because we stand to benefit significantly financially if this goes forward. As a district, that we are pushing this. And I don't think that's the case. That's not something that we've discussed. And I just wanted to be clear that. You know, as this project moves forward, I know that there's many people that are for it. I know there are some people that are against it. There'll be a hearing for that. I understand it's going to be held at the, at the school, which. That would be the public. Right, the public event for those types of discussions. But I, I guess my concern was just understanding that this is something that's happening to us. Not something that's happening because of us.
And I think to that. Topic, Jeff, we had some questions about why we were hosting the meeting. And our, our policy clearly states that, you know, we, we partner with government agencies. And so since the Public Utility Commission, you know, asked to use our school for a community meeting. You know, our policy says, if it's not needed for, for educational purposes, that, that we make it available to. To other governmental entities. So. Again, kind of to your point, like, we weren't, we aren't hosting it and trying to persuade community members one way or the other, but we're hosting it because. Of, of our policy and requests.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to, to show bias one way or the other. The, the, the fact of the matter is that. That this project is happening independent of the school. We just happen to be. You know, able to benefit from it if it does go forward.
Yeah, our, our engagement here is purely just, we just want to provide information. You know that there are many ways to get information out there, and, you know, on school board, you certainly are aware that, you know, not all. Not all information is created equally. So we certainly want to just make sure that y'all know what, where we're coming from on this. That will be an open book. And if you do want to talk to resources at the state level, learn more about what's going on here. Happy to connect you with the folks who administer this program. And are involved in it day to day, so you can really hear from, hear from the horse's mouth how this, how this works, if, if that's something you'd like. But again, given it's a decision by the, by the county, by the state, whether this goes forward, by the county or the pilot goes forward. Fortunately, y'all are not, not involved except being, being here. So. Unless you want to be, and some people have done that before, but. But yeah, I, again, really appreciate the time and, and the comments, and. There is anything else, please, please do let me know. My contact information's in those folders. Feel free to call with any questions, or if folks you know have questions. Direct them to us, and we have an office up in Croton, so feel free to stop by there as well. The open sign is hanging out by the door.
Perfect. Doug, thank you for your time tonight, and Samantha as well, and, and providing information tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Um, next this evening. Item three point two, capital fundraising campaign in partnership with Athletic Boosters. Brian Elder is here, as well as I see Kurt Brewer in the audience as well. So. Brian, we welcome you to the podium.
All right, green light is on. Hi, I'm Brian Elder, representing Northridge Athletic Boosters. And we have my wife Chandra, Kurt Brewer, president of the boosters, Lauren, also, and I think maybe a few other super members in this. Meeting here tonight. Thanks so much for your time. Just wanted to give you guys an update of the capital campaign that we've been. Working on. I'm a vice, my day job's a vice president of Park National Bank. And then investing a lot of time and energy with this fundraising effort, so. Just a great trajectory of positivity and community involvement. We set out for a goal a couple of years ago. A group before I even got involved, the boosters came to the board and said, hey. We need, you know, safety soundness issues. The school realized they needed a new track, needed new bleachers. Instead of just kind of piecemealing, spending a bunch of money here and there. The board allowed the boosters to say, let's go out and try to raise money. So they kind of decided. Let's raise two million dollars, and then we'll continue to combine those efforts into one project. So where we are right now, we really hit the ground hot and heavy, beginning last April, May. We're not quite to two million yet. We have one point six three million dollars in pledges, and we have, please just say one point two six. Million dollars in cash at this moment. Our goal as a committee and a boosters group and community is to raise over the two million dollar goal. Our goal as a committee and a boosters group and community is to raise over the two million dollar goal. Is every dollar we can raise more is, is, you know, less the school has to put into or gets to put into and saves that for other, other items. So really just working on scope, scale. There's been changes all along the way, for the better. For instance, you know, we want to do what makes sense fiscally. Give a lot of credit to the board, the superintendent, the treasurer for not just jumping in. Two years ago when we started, we couldn't start raising money. The levy wasn't passed right quite yet and the, and the school wasn't built. We've seen neighboring districts make that same mistake and it really cost them a lot of reputation in the community. So timing is right. We put together a twenty-year significant maintenance plan. Nine years ago, the district was under fiscal watch and the treasurer finance committee and the board has really been fiscally responsible and building the fund up as high as it has been. And, you know, what's great is we have over two hundred and eighty donors out of that one point six three million, a lot of corporations and businesses, but, you know, two hundred and fifty, give or take individual households. And a lot of those, I don't have any specific data, but a lot of those are, are taxpayers and voting members of our community. And it's just neat. You know, the, the, the overall positivity. There's always going to be naysayers. I kind of say, let them say nay. They're gonna say no to the levy. They're gonna say no to the, the solar project. They're gonna say no to the stadium project. They're gonna say no to everything. We need to focus on the people that are rallying around this community and making a great community. Don Jakeway, you've seen the Jakeway name in Johnstown. Met with him last week. He, he's the son of of Mr. Jakeway, but he was nineteen sixty-five and sixty-six. He reminded me that his Johnstown Johnny's went twenty-one and oh, and when he came to Northridge, he played on that same field nineteen sixty-five, nineteen sixty-six. So we've gotten a great run out of it. There's a parent-led group in the nineties that did the press box and the, and the home bleachers. And, and, and the school, once again, they weren't in a position nine years ago or beyond to really invest significant funds. So the deferred maintenance that they've been able to save and use, what they've used and we've used is, is just really great to see. That's kind of where we are. We're always looking for more funds. Happy to take any donations at the moment. Our committee is still committed and we're asking every day, writing letters, sending emails, making phone calls to try to get above that two million dollars. I see Clay Keith here with Robertson. Want to thank you guys for entertaining the RFP tonight. Because once again, you know, we started with, we, we're gonna do it over here and we're gonna have locker rooms. Well, guess what? Cost and construction have really increased, so we're gonna take that away. We're gonna be fiscally responsible. So if we do the RFP, we're able to get the numbers. We can then work with Brett and the finance committee and Scott and Clay. And if we need to change again, we will. We'll do what makes fiscal sense and then really still be able to do what's key and give the youth and the students of our school district the empowerment to be all that they can be and give them the facilities that they deserve. So any, happy to answer any questions from the board or anybody?
I was gonna first say, I know Terry Holder has been also instrumental in, in getting some, some large donations. I think she put together.
Yes, I'm sorry, here. I will share this with the board. That's just really an image to show the power of the statement of the people who've donated anywhere from twenty-five dollars to fifty thousand dollars. So pretty impactful there. Anything to add?
That's just very impressive. Really appreciate your help with this, Brian. It's, it's, it's tremendous. I know in, in January, or actually it was back in December, that Mr. Schmidt promised that we'd get a a first look really at the, at the numbers. And Mr. Keith, I think it was maybe in your absence, I don't think you were able to be in our, in our January meeting. But we reviewed some numbers at that, at that meeting. And I look forward to considering this, this RFP proposal. I have no reason to think that we won't be going far with it. It just make, it's, it's the way we, it's the way we approached the primary project back for now the elementary building project. In terms of getting, just getting some solid, some solid numbers before we go, before we go, go all in on this and make sure that we're on solid financial footing. And appreciate your, your understanding of that process and your support for it.
No, that's great. It's the right thing to do. The great thing is a, a community like Northridge, who multiple people have said you'll never get close to two million. We're already, we're getting, we're over eighty percent there and that's pretty exciting.
You got there a lot faster than I think most, most of us thought, thought would be, got, got where you are a lot faster than we thought was, would have been possible. And I, and I think that generally, to the extent any of, any of us have, have, have talked about it, and we haven't talked about it as a board before. But the concept of looking at money that we're going to spend anyway on a decaying facility. And if there's a way that we can combine the donations with the money the district is going to spend anyway, that just makes too much sense. If we can get something that, that will stand up and, and go forward a whole lot longer. I mean, some of the things that we'd be looking at replacing, I understand the press box is not in good shape. If we were to replace that right now, we wouldn't get the useful life of the, of the, of the press box unless we made a bunch of other improvements that it's sounding to me like may not be financially sound to, to undertake.
Correct. Timing is right. Clay will tell you. I'm guessing Clay will tell you it's not going to get any cheaper in the future. Construction inflation, supply, demand. The school district's in a great place with the levy being passed, the school being built, the maintenance plan. You know, really high dollar amount, not that we need to just irresponsibly spend anything, but we need to get something done for the youth of our kids. We've seen too many people leave the North Catholic or Bishop Water Center for different reasons that are solid kids and should be at Northridge.
Uh, there's, there's a lot of things to balance. We, we can't let our education take a second seat at athletics, that's for sure.
Absolutely.
But I know that, I know you don't, you aren't suggesting that.
No, no, I think I'd only, I think there's a mental health awareness that you can only add, you know, you can only have participate in rundown facilities or go to Johnstown and use their high jump pit and have to win state that way and things like that. But Northridge, I give them credit. Like I said, there, I don't think there's any, anybody can go out and say, you guys, we've been irresponsible with our funds towards the athletic facility. So I think there's a lot of deferred maintenance opportunity there that we can look at.
When I joined as board, we were five hundred dollars per kid, per, per sport, no limits, no nothing.
Look at that, how far we've come.
That was, that was in twenty twelve.
Yeah.
And I know that, that my colleague, Jane Bamerlin, she had the, the, I think her first meeting faced with, with the prospect of, of canceling athletics. And that happened for a minute, and I think the district is still paying a price. But with the information that was available at that board, they had no other choice but to do what they did. And they brought it back next meeting, but by then other people made decisions and I think some of those decisions are still affecting our programs.
Yeah, and like I said, I think there's definitely a perception aspect, but I'll give you guys credit. Doug out a whole, you know, even at the finance committee I was in in October, we were talking about the solar panel and Brett said, we can't count on a dollar of that until we get a dollar of that. You know, I don't know what the timeframe is, but hopefully it gets passed in the fall and things. So you, we're doing all the right things. The boosters are trying to do all the right things. The community is trying to do all the right things. Don't worry about the naysayers. They're gonna say nay no matter what. Be positive about the community and the youth and can't thank you guys enough. I've said enough. Any questions? Yes. Sign me up. We are taking checks tonight as well, if you need.
So my question is, have you even decided where you're gonna put this in?
So yeah, it's a work in progress. Tonight's the first step through the process of getting the RFP. We, we think, yeah, so just, just real quick, we thought the stadium would make sense where it is, but due to timing, due to cost, due to structure, custom versus standard.
And we're, we're gonna actually answer some of those questions in just a minute.
So I mean, that's a big deal because I think in, all right, we're putting all this money forward, but you're, you're getting all the, these little, you know, you're getting all the parts for the house, but you don't know how to properly put it.
Exactly. You can't build a house, so we gotta know how much it costs to build a house, how much money we have to build the house. So I know restrooms are a big push. We got a lot of dollars because people are waiting in port line, port-a-johns with their trombone in between the band members. So that's, that's all I have. Maybe Clay can help answer questions. I'll, I'll be happy.
I think, I think it probably makes sense unless there's any other comments for, for Brian.
Make us just thank you and Kurt. Sorry, I can barely see you. Everybody and Terry, who's put work into it. I know, like my husband's family, I didn't grow, I didn't graduate from Northridge, but he did. And they didn't even hesitate. They've been to like little bitty football games and didn't hesitate. So obviously, like, people trust the process. So we appreciate that fact that things are gonna get done the right way.
Yep, great point. Generations of people coming out and saying it's overdue and just grateful that we're able to band together. And yeah, just we'll try to do what's best by the district and the, and the taxpayers and mostly the kids, which is what we're all here for.
And, and Ms. Crager, speaking of things getting done the right way, that's a great entree to, to Clay Keith and Robertson Construction Company. Because in our dealings with them, with the primary, or the, the, the construction of the elementary building, they, they do things the right way. And we have our, sitting beside Clay back there was, is our, Mike Mendenhall, our, our board's consultant, and he, he, he watches over it too. So that's, that's an extra step in there to make sure things are done correctly.
So we've asked, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Brian and, and Kurt and rest the, rest of the committee. Lauren, thank you. So while Clay is setting up his computer, no stranger to, to the board. But we have asked Robertson to give us kind of an overview of what they've been helping with. They've been donating their time and energy at this point around the, the project. Have done some community engagement, as well as working with the boosters. Have presented to the facilities committee as well as the finance committee. And so a chance to, to share with us this evening as well.
Yeah, I was there.
Don't touch it, Clay.
All right.
I'm not gonna go to the podium. Can everyone hear me?
Oh, look at you. You're, I'll throw mics at you.
Cause then people at home won't be able to hear you.
Well, Doug, thank you very much for the intro. I kind of feel like I'm doing an encore now. I've been doing presentations for the last two weeks to finance facilities, boosters, and really tried to put this presentation together to present the opportunity. This is just an opportunity at this point. Try to present the facts from all committees' perspectives and all people's perspectives. So that we can make an informed decision of where we're at and where we want to go. So I have rubbed various people in each committee wrong a little bit by pushing the facts. But I think that's good. I mean, if you're pushing people, they bring more ideas. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. Maybe. We're gonna cover where the current cap, capital campaign in funding status is, overview of needs, the current proposal. We kind of stole this from the initial community engagements presentation. So with that community engagement, we asked for input. So we've got ratings on how they looked at different aspects of this project and then what our next steps are. The current capital campaign funding status, their goal was to raise two million dollars privately, partner with the school district and put funds that were already allocated for facility upgrades together with the district's funds to come up with one comprehensive project. They currently are committed to raise two million dollars, have one point five million dollars in cash to be able to bring this project to the board for consideration. I know because I've been there, I've been meeting with administration. We are looking to try to put this piece together to be able to actually present what a project could be. We've been in several meetings, started with some concepts that you'll see a little bit later to try to develop it and get to a point that we could decide or put our best faith effort into what does this project actually cost? I mean, the boosters are raising two million. The ask, as I understand, is the board to kick in two million. But what does it cost? There were some state term contractors that came out to the district that can talk in silos, but not complete comprehensive projects and give you budgets to get you started. That's what happened. That's where we came up with a two million, two million kind of ask. But we're not looking at our site, our plan, our development and what our, our project could actually cost. So current status, Brian, I believe you already gave that. I, I gave you a little bit more credit. I said you were at one point seven, but then lowered you down to one point two. So we were close. We're in the ballpark. What this would take, the district currently has a million dollars allocated over the next five years for athletics improvements. That's one million over the next five years. For the board to be able to do a two million dollar give, they would actually have to look out into the next five-year forecast and allocate those funds to this project to come up with a two million dollar gift. What that results in, in essence, is you're gonna deplete all athletic funds through the year twenty thirty-two for new construction. It still has money in there for maintenance and upkeep, but there will not be any new construction unless new money comes in for athletics over the next ten years. And that got good and bad reviews. I mean, some liked it, some didn't like it. But that's the reality of the funds that we have for the PI and how we can allocate them. Anything else would be pulling away from classrooms and buildings. What has the district done lately? What have you done for me lately? Baseball softball improvements to the fields, softball dugouts were replaced. Wrestling had HVAC and lighting upgrades. We, there were some wrestling mats replaced. And with the PK five project, we put in two brand-new practice fields for all athletics and band. The needs, and we tried to break this out into two different categories. There are priority needs. There are things that need to be addressed soon. Then there's also other considerations, which are items that would equalize two facilities. Meaning if you kept your football stadium in one place and you had a soccer track stadium, they should be equal for both, both sets of athletes or all athletes. So the priority was to replace the running track. There's drainage issues. The soccer field is not good. The soccer field needs to be addressed. If you're going to replace the track and add drainage for the track, you need to address the soccer field. So it would be putting in drainage for the soccer field, stripping the dirt out, putting new dirt in, reseeding and crowning that field as it should be. You've also got visitor bleachers that need replaced. We've got the press box that needs to be addressed. We don't have restrooms at either facility, which we know is, in Northridge, restrooms are a thing. And the concession ticket booth at the football field needs to be addressed. There's really no full concession stand at the football field or the soccer field. The other considerations are lighting and sound for the soccer and track stadium. Small bleachers for the soccer track stadium that would also be able to provide a small press box for announcements and scorekeeping. Those would equalize the two facilities. The cost, and we put, we put estimates to everything. If you did everything right now, this summer, go in, take care of it all. This summer, go in, take care of it all. We're at about two point three million. We know that can't be done if we do individual projects. So when you project those costs over a five year, a ten year period. Doing individual projects, losing economy of scale, that cost will go up. Some pictures and views of of some of the items that we talked about. We've got the visitors' football stands. The press box and the ticket booth at the football field, a- and you can see that they all need to be addressed. Why? Why do a stadium? Why put all this money into athletics? Well. Average participation in the middle school is fifty-five percent of your students, forty-eight percent of your uh high school students. You've had a ten percent increase over the past five years in participation. Um, the, in the high school, twenty-seven percent increase at the middle school. The GPA for your athletes is hovering right around three point four. And when you look at it, you've, out of those two hundred and ten athletes that you have in your district. I mean, a little over half of them are only playing one sport, but you've got almost half your students playing two or three sports. The current proposal to to combine efforts between the school districts and the boosters. To provide a multi-use outdoor venue. It is one single comprehensive project from your constituents within the district. If you come in and replace the visitor stands, there's gonna be a few people that notice. You come in and replace the press box, there's gonna be a few people that notice. You come in and build a new stadium, all your competitors and all of. The people in your district are gonna know that you're making an impression. This not only benefits your athletes, but it also benefits youth sports, band, and everyone that's associated with the community. This again was robbed from the community engagement um proposal. But this really sums up what the project is that we're currently looking at. It's bleachers, a turf field, track, and restrooms. And the amenities that go with it, such as lights, sound, things like that. What is the trend? The trend is to go to turf. Um, a lot of your competitors have turf. I would say over the last ten years. Central Ohio has went to turf. Um, it is the trend in in high school sports. Now, in five years, will it still be the trend? I don't know. But it is a growing and growing industry. In fact, to the point that the bigger schools now in central Ohio are going to turf baseball. And doing the infield in turf. What would this require? Um, you currently have two stadiums. Makes it kind of easy if you have competitions. Uh, this would require more scheduling. This is a competition field though. So only the athletes that are actually competing against other fields would be on the field and they would take precedent over all others. You now have two practice fields. So what used to be accommodating. In two fields and then working out by the playground and the uh softball fields, trying to find a place to have a practice. You now have two full practice fields that you can use for the other athletes. So it will be a scheduling. Challenge, but not something that you can overcome. As I said earlier, we got community engagement. Uh, we asked a series of questions. We gave the people stickers, a green stick. Picker was, they loved it. Yellow, okay. Red, no. So the results. Of that, the green results, the things that people liked about the presentation and the thought. Was the new stadium location, and I'll go over that a little bit in just a moment. Um, include restrooms. They wanted turf over grass. Include concessions, and also they really thought a three-phase project. To be able to at least think and and have goals to get a complete master plan. For athletics within Northridge was the way to go. Some things that were marginal was gravel parking lots, um ticket sales windows. And repurpose the home stands for the visitor stands. The items they did not like, uh reuse the existing goalposts, a natural grass field. Doing the locker rooms now, they understood the cost. And where the costs are today to add locker rooms to it puts this project kind of out of reach. Um, they did not want a high-tech scoreboard. They didn't want to look at a single-phase project versus a three-phase master plan. And they did not want to rebuild the football field at the current location. So the overview. A master plan considered for all of your campus. And how the athletics are gonna work in that campus. What we're talking about today is phase one. That's this project, track, turf, restrooms, bleachers, one stadium. What would be in the future is potential of combining baseball and softball and creating a baseball softball complex. Does that include practice fields? I don't know. Additional parking? I don't know. But the thought is what could we do if we did that? And that's something that people wanted to look at. And then phase three, the locker rooms, a field house. It makes sense with the current location of where we're proposing to put this stadium. That you could put a field house in between the high school, middle school, and the stadium that would then serve all of your competing athletes. With phase three, we can't forget in Northridge, if you've got restrooms, you must have parking. So there is consideration to figure out where we could get additional parking on campus for athletics and students. Here is where we started. Our first concept, we tried to put the stadium up at the front. Where the current football stadium is. There are issues in doing that. Um, to be able to get the track in. It does not fit without major work. So it would impede on the new road that we just put in for the elementary school. The, well, the existing track, I believe, is a four-lane track or was a four-lane track. For OHSAA, you need an eight-lane competition track, so it almost doubles the width of that track. So. That is the purpose for keeping a competition track in this project. But when I say impeding the road, there's also a stream right behind the road. That can't be moved. So building and doing extensive earthwork in that area to make that piece of the road work. Would be quite expensive. It also impedes on the um varsity softball field. As well as the parking area that was just put in for the elementary school. And it's gonna make it very tight. It shows locker rooms up there and a concession stand in big boxes. Those could be moved and changed to fit in that area, but with all the other constraints. We knew it just wasn't going to work. So we had to go back and think about it. What can we do? We came up with concept two. Just move the stadium to the back where the soccer track is. Um, as you noticed, we covered up the softball field, put parking over it because we must have parking. Um, we have locker rooms, we have stadium or bleachers. We had the concession stand. In this concept, the concession stand was gonna be the grandiose entry coming into your stadium. Well, as we looked at this concept, the, there's no way to go get anything from the concession stand. And still have clear sight to the football field or the track. So we went back to the drawing board. Concept three. We moved the lockers out of the way. We moved the concession stand over so you could see the field and see the um track. We put in a sidewalk so that we could utilize the elementary school parking lot as access. As well as the existing gravel lot as access, both going into the stadium. And we took the parking out and left the softball field in place because we didn't have the money to move it and didn't know where we were gonna move it to. So then, concept three, we put budget numbers on. That was the first concept that we actually ran numbers on. And said, you can't afford this. It was over five million dollars. So went, how can we pare it down? If you notice, the locker rooms are removed. The additional concrete that was around the whole stadium is removed. We put one singular sidewalk coming in off the back road behind the high school, middle school. The thought process there was that back road would be shut off during events, and that would become a walking road. Not only for guests and visitors, but also the home side as well as handicap. So we provided access for everybody in one spot, one sidewalk less money. Um, locker rooms are gone, and this is the current concept that we are working with. That we went ahead and tried to run some new numbers on. Where we are currently um budget-wise, this project's about a four point seven to four point eight million dollar project. Now, keep in mind, the numbers I'm giving you are based off the drawing you just saw. So that's a square that says bleachers. That's a square that says can uh. Ticket booth concession. It's a round oval with a track in the middle. That's the information we had to put the numbers to. Now, we did historical data. We've contacted a bunch of subcontractors. We've tried to get as close as we can get, but this isn't designed to know what's underground. What we have to do for drainage, what we have to do to provide power. So these numbers are still somewhat ballpark. We also put together a schedule that if the board and the boosters, if this happens and you guys say go. Four months for design, nine months for construction. And that is, as long as we don't have any delays in the middle. And as you know, going through the PK five, we can hit some snags, we can hit some issues. We can have to revise designs to make it work in the budget. So that four months is. As long as we're going smooth. Now that um I'm pretty much through the next steps, but this is what we did. Um, on the ninth, we started with the finance committee, then went to boosters and facilities last week. Presenting to you now. And we do have. An agreement that's proposed out there, but we are also going back with a new RFP and I. I understand everything that's going on with that, and I think it's a wise choice on the district side. But right now, the ask is, are you gonna go out with the RFP to start the process? Now, keep in mind, I started this presentation off with the boosters. And the best knowledge that I have in what the commitment was, to be at two million and one point five, we're not there yet. But we're pushing to try to get something on the books, something designed. Something that we can take the next steps forward to, to understand the true cost. Questions? Yeah.
Or the pipe of the line.
The four point seven to four point eight is a complete project. The emphasis was, the drawing that I showed you as concept for, it's not designed. It's going off big boxes. So we've got to get that design to the next level. To really be able to start to understand what the utilities are, how the connections are gonna be made. And what the cost, what, what does a concession stand look like? Is it a pre-engineered metal building? Or is it a masonry structure? Those are vastly different in cost. It is in there. There is a budget for it in there. Yes, we have budgeted money for all utilities. No, I don't.
Let me help explain a little bit and and not get into to a public debate as sort of presentation, but. In in building that budget, and I'll speak to like the process we went through with the elementary. We had a twenty-two million dollar budget. Once we found out that, hey, their, you know, plumbing is going to cost X, which was. Ten thousand dollars more than what may have originally been budgeted, then we kind of went through a value engineering of, hey, where. Where can we reduce something by ten thousand so that we have enough for that? So the initial budget takes into account all the different aspects. The final numbers won't be available until we get to.
Clay, is it fair to say that what we have right now are rough estimates? I mean, an educated guess, but. And and the RFP, as I understand it, I mean, it's necessitated, it's the equivalent of bidding. Uh, just because we were originally thinking that the contract that we did with with Robertson way back when with the pre-K. Uh, that that was gonna, the pre-K five, that that was, that was broad enough to cover this project as well. Even though that was true, uh, the original board motion approving uh for the original RFP. Wasn't that broad, and so we we wanna go back now and and cover those bases and put in RFP. Um, we 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 love Robertson. We hope, we hope Robertson prevails in this process, but but the, but nobody's putting fingers on the scales. Um, but but Robertson's done all this for for no consideration, and and they've they've gone as far as they can at this point. The the purpose of the of of the of the contract we're entering to, when when the RFP is let, is we'll get better numbers. We'll get firm numbers. You still won't be bid. They still won't be bid to the, we'll still have to go out for bids on with all the subs, and that's. That's what we did on the on on the elementary building. That's what we'll do on this. To get actual hard numbers that we're gonna live with, and that's just how this process works.
Correct, and that is a common question that has come up in multiple committees. Of what the cost of the turf is. Uh, the turf is significantly less on a yearly basis to maintain. The turf is projected to last ten to twelve years on normal use. When I say normal use, it's probably more use than what Northridge would use it for. When they look at some of the bigger schools that have more teams that play on it constantly. So we can, I think we can definitely safely project that this turf could last twelve years. And it's about today's dollars, about four hundred and forty thousand to replace it. Four hundred and forty. I don't have the district's numbers on that. We do from historical data on other projects. I mean, you're asking for a lot of details on a concept plan. You're about three months ahead of us.
Yeah, I don't wanna interrupt, but that kind of leads me into, I don't know if it's really you question or Scott, but. One of the, I won't make you go back to it, but I was just gonna ask. Turp, between turf and grass, like one of the charts, it's hard to see because it's a glare over here, but. There is a big difference in scheduling as far as like, right now, grass. Already does require a lot of scheduling, correct or no? Because it has to recover from.
So we try, yeah, so we try not to overschedule one. We try not to overschedule the the natural grass because. use of it, where is it now and, and whatnot. One of the benefits of the, the turf, the artificial turf is the fact that you can schedule independent of weather and you can schedule things back to back.
Play on it tomorrow if the temperature were permitted.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
With all the rain that we just had.
Yeah, whereas.
As long as our drainage is sufficient and, and not just the drainage, take it away, it has to be receptacle because I mean, it can be fed into a city. It can be fed into a, a city, a, a city stormwater system. And if the city stormwater system isn't good enough to receive it, you can still have a backup. So we have to take all that into account. I mean.
Water's getting out of there for every building that you built too.
Exactly.
Yeah, but, but the, having, having the artificial turf is, is kind of key to the issue of being able to have it be a multi-sport, multi-activity competition field.
Okay, that was my main, even if it's a little more scheduling with turf, it's still very beneficial.
Back to back to back games with, with turf, not worry about wearing out the area in front of the goal.
Right.
Like football teams often do from going for it on, you know, third and fourth down at the goal line. And, and you end up with these huge bear patches or in soccer, you end up with these bear patches in front of the goal, especially if it's played in weather like we just had on grass, the, the turf holds up.
Yeah, so that's another good point is when you're talking about maintenance, you're also maintaining two fields right now.
So a couple of things, oh, I, I was going to say a couple of things as far as community input and engagement. We have talked about having another community meeting once we get further in the process. Tonight's meeting was really to, to update the board. So I don't know if there's any other questions from the board tonight for Clay.
I, I just believe that there is a plan in place. I need to know more about it down the road, not tonight. For the replacement of the turf, to, to plan for the replacement of the turf. That, that's not going to become a general fund item or, or we'll find if there's room in the, even going beyond twenty thirty-two and, and twenty thirty-six, whenever this would be, twenty thirty-four to twenty, maybe that's the solution. I don't know.
And I do know that next month is a finance committee and I'm not sure if it's, I think board gets reviewed in April, but the PI funds and what the projects are allocated for PI is being reviewed by the finance committee in March. So it is all kind of timely because we have this twenty-year plan. And obviously that does need to be addressed.
Right. And, and I also, sorry, Mike, one more thing. I don't want it, I don't want it to go very lightly through this presentation either. The fact that the boosters have committed to two million. You're asking of the board two million, you're going to have a gap, seven to eight hundred thousand dollars for this project. So how that is sorted and how that's divvied up or who's going to take responsibility for that is another question for this project.
We can retool, we don't know. There may be, there may be a way to tweak.
Right.
We're not ruling that out now.
I mean, we can cut. We can cut. But we've pretty much cut to basics. Right now, what we've done, I think in concept four is kind of pulled it down as far from a facilities place as you can be. We can cut restrooms. We can cut press boxes. We can cut fencing. We can, you know, there's all kinds of cuts that you can go through there. But to provide a true comprehensive project that you're not going to want in the next year to start putting more money into because you should have done it the first time, that's kind of.
Yeah, we don't want to be there.
Right.
Mike, you were going to add something?
The microphone's coming your way.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to expand on Clay's answer to your question regarding the turf and the cost and why, why go with synthetic turf versus grass. Had the good fortune to work with, I think, four districts on stadium projects and you know, when you start factoring in, you know, aerating and overseeding, when you talk about mowing, you know, during the, the months that you have to cut grass, it is, if you have irrigation, it's the upkeep. There are a number of factors that go into that. And I think over the life cycle of that, it's been, you know, told to me from turf manufacturers that it's almost a cost neutral and sometimes you actually come out ahead. And it's also factoring in lost time of, of the field, the use of the field because inclement weather. So I, I think, I, I just, you know, your question, I want to make sure that at least I shared that with you too, that that there, there, there are benefits to synthetic turf.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mike. Any other questions? So next steps. We're going to talk about that. So next step is looking at issuing the request for proposal, which we'll talk about as a separate item on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Clay, thank you for your time tonight and for your time at the previous committee meetings and booster meetings and everything else.
And being a great dartboard.
Staff comments?
Do you have any staff comments tonight?
I don't believe so. Mr. Roberts, Mrs. Roberts, any comments? Okay, no staff comments.
And so that takes us to unscheduled visitors with the specific agenda comments. And I only have one form and that would be in the latter section of the, of the meeting. We don't have any other requests to speak tonight, Mr. Ross. All right.
No.
So that takes us to our discussion items. And you're up first on that, Mr. Ross.
All right, so we've changed this a little bit, but where are we here?
It's going to be easier when we actually have a laptop in front of you.
Let's move on.
This is a good phase.
Okay, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. All right, so the finance committee, we had the solar presentation you all had this evening. And we had the stadium presentation you all had this evening. And we had the same conversations we all had this evening. So that was pretty much what happened with finance. Facilities was a little different. We had the stadium presentation and, and we've had the facilities meeting, I want to say, the group is, has been great and we're meeting two times in the month, not just, not just the one. We've got a lot going on with this project and some other pieces that we need, need some input. And so one of the things we did talk about at facilities was the permanent improvement plan and how that works and why it's important and how does it fit into this conversation? And so I've shared with them the current original plan and then I'm working hard right now with our department, Scott and Dave, like going through and trying to see what items we had planned to do this year, what items we'd plan to do next year. What's feasible to have happen and, and share that with this group and then share with the finance committee this next month and then the board. So it's also where we have the one million dollars committed to improvements on our athletic facilities over five years. And then the discussion of, you know, if, if we're being asked, where else can we look? And so we'll be looking at that fund to see, you know, what flexibility there is in that fund, if any. And, and what's that look like? And again, we'd be looking out over the following five years because we have commitments over this first five, more so than we do in the second five. So it's, it's maintaining what we said we were going to do and finding a way to look at options and possibilities moving forward. Don't have any answers on that yet because it's all part of this process. But, but we'll be looking into that. And so we shared that, we'll have strong conversations with that. They'll be looking, and the facilities committee's looking at, all right, we made a commitment now, now what are we doing? And in the process of that, one of the things we're also looking at that we'll be sharing with them is the the restroom renovations and water line, supply lines in the middle school that we need to address. And make sure we have that identified with some numbers so that we know what that following five years could look like. And make sure we're covering everything. So that's, that's the big plan right now with the permanent improvement plan. There's a lot of pressure on that that right now that wasn't on it. And I want to be clear with everybody. Wasn't on until the boosters raised a whole bunch of money and made it a priority here. So it's now become a priority for me and the finance committee and the facilities committee and a lot more than, than it would have been had we not had that happen. So it's a, it's a good problem to have is what I'm saying.
I'd like to thank you for making his life harder.
Yeah, thanks. I really appreciate it. So. So then we did the stadium presentation and then circled back to the permanent improvement plan. So it's just, it was a lot of good discussion, great presentation to the group, Clay, appreciate it. And, and that's where we are. I, I was pleased with the solar presentation, pleased, pleased with the stadium presentation. And the way it was received by both groups and then the permanent improvement plan, great discussion with the facilities committee. For a group that we've just kind of put together with Steve Hillby and the one remaining person from the last committee. And Steve was the one who kind of really pushed hard for the plan. He wanted to see it now and see what it was going to be. And I really appreciate that expertise that they, that they all bring. So that's where we are. Real, real happy with the facilities and finance, obviously finance committee, we've been together since basically two thousand and seven with some, some of the original folks. And then I arrived in twelve, so the end of twelve, so we've been together a while in that group. This group's kind of new, getting together. And, and they, and what I like about this group is, is they get it already. They're very fiscally sound, which is very nice. They know that they have to keep an eye on the funds, the eye on the budget, and, and then the wants and needs. So, good group. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Ross about his report? If none, I, I, I do, it's not on there as an item tonight, but do you have any update on the, on the audit?
Oh, well, thank you for asking. I did get a phone call today from audit. They're usually not done this quickly. It looks like that we may have a, another clean audit. And we're very excited about that, especially in our office this year. We were a little, little nervous. We're nervous every year. So, but it's, it's some good news. Pending anything catastrophic happening by tomorrow. Need to say it out there, I see it in writing, but, but verbally, they've given us a thumbs up and, and we're very pleased.
Well, congratulations on that in advance and we'll look forward to getting that letter.
I'm always looking forward to that.
All right, Mr. Schmidt, I imagine you're going to do the building and departmental reports.
I'm actually going to have Dr. Michael help us out with building department reports.
So, February is a very busy time for both academics and athletics. Parent-teacher conferences have started at all three buildings and we've had good participation. And we, most of the buildings still have another night this week of those parent-teacher conferences. Athletics, we've had a lot of competitions that are coming to an end. So we had our girls' basketball team. The middle school won the second place in the tournament and that was very exciting. And we're excited about those girls moving on to the high school team in the future. And the boys' basketball team at the middle school begins this week. So, and they're playing West Jefferson. Yeah, somebody mentioned two twenty-two, twenty-two. So we had a spontaneous dance party that was taking place at the elementary school at two twenty-two for two twenty-two. And so there was some great, just cheer and excitement from all the students when Mrs. Beaver announced that this afternoon. We've had some breakdancing and some just, I don't know, it was very nice change from the the gross rainy outside where they haven't been able to go outside very much. So. What else I want to highlight, our Quiz Bowl has had two competitions so far in the month of February. It's a four, four-person team, underclassmen. And so far, they've defeated Johnstown, Licking Heights and Millersport. And they are looking forward to expanding their participation, having even more success next year. You're aware of our Viking Cafe that is from our Student Resource Center that helps provide coffee and hot chocolate to the staff and students on Friday. Since this has been National Counselors Month and Kindness Month, they've been writing positive notes on those cups. Which is a nice surprise for the, the students and staff who have purchased those things. There's a long list for Mr. Jarrett in terms of like bowling and swimming and wrestling. So I'll let you read that at your leisure. But we're always excited about the opportunities our students have, not just in academics, but athletics as well. Our preschool application for peers has been made available already and we already have sixteen applications. That was the very first day it opened. We had sixteen people apply to be a peer for our preschool program. So both Mrs. McJesse and Mrs. Leonard are very excited about that. And we feel very fortunate that Licking County ESC was able to help us out with our unanticipated speech opening. They're going to make available two speech pathologists part-time to help us maintain our caseloads and evaluations in order to fill that hole. Cause I would say that we were all a little nervous when we figured it out that, that that was going to take place this month, that we were going to have to find a replacement. We just wrapped up a PD day on this past Friday. Teachers really have had an opportunity to do a lot of professional development this year. And there's a lot of demands from the state in terms of all the new learning they need to do. Great teams that we have working collaboratively together. And we're all kind of gearing up for the fact that state tests start March first. So we start with our ACT testing starting at the high school. That's a big change from where you know, when I grew up and probably most of you, you had to like go on a Saturday if you wanted to take the ACT or the SAT. Now the state does provide funding for all juniors to take that onsite, so nobody has to go anywhere. And so that will be taking place. That's our first kind of big test that takes place during the spring testing season. And I think those are the big highlights. So a lot of things going on in February and we're all looking forward to some sunshine and getting the kids outside and getting some of those tests under our belt. Thank you.
And wrapping, wrapping those last two pieces up from food service standpoint, sort of a, a broken record, but continuing to have supply chain issues, some things going well, like milk delivery. But Chrissy Wilkie helping to order things from Amazon and wherever else we can get them, Walmart and, and everything else. And just again, passing along a thank you from, from Carly to the parents and students for understanding that announcements have now changed to anticipated today for lunch will be. And then you just kind of see what, what actually all became available or what, what it was included. And I have to say, our maintenance team has been doing a great job with the winter weather. It's always a taxing season. Thank you, Dr. Michael, for that update.
There are no questions. Dr. Michael, thank you so much for a great report. Matt, I think you're up for.
I am.
Your superintendent.
So super, yep, so superintendent discussion item. Really just one in looking at effects of the intel announcements. We've had some meetings with Jersey Township, including Southwest Licking Water and Sewer. We have been working, I've been working with the Licking County Superintendents because this is really potentially affecting all of Licking County. So we're looking at what types of meetings and, and what type of things should we be doing as a county group of superintendents? And we've also talked about setting up a future meeting with New Albany. We know that there are often well, well-thought-out plans. And working with them to try to understand what all the other potentials are rather than, than waiting to see what happens. So know that there's a lot going on and it, it's a lot of exploratory. I'm, I'm encouraged by the level of, of a conversation happening between the entities. Want to thank Mr. Hart for setting up the, the Jersey Township connection and, and meeting his work with, with Jersey Township. Definitely helped get the ball rolling there, but we're, we're continuing that at the superintendent's level across the county.
And just, just to add quickly, the Jersey Township situation is they're considering an overlay zoning district that will meet up with, with a JED, Joint Economic Development District. Where they'll probably grant, they, they're looking to, they're, they're looking to run water and sewer. And in order to run water and sewer, it's basically going to be mostly through our district. To run water and sewer, they're going to have to have some tax abatements. And they're looking at doing a twenty-year, seventy-five percent abatement. Want to make the sewer, the sewer district is wanting to make sure the school district would, would be on board with that. Because they can't do the development if there isn't. And what they're talking about doing is basically converting a lot of what is currently CAUV farmland on Worthington Road for the most part, down by, between three ten and Mink Street into an economic development district. And that, from a school district standpoint. Into an Economic Development District and that, from a school district standpoint, that that farmland. Is gonna continue to generate very limited funds, so from a from a from a school finance standpoint. The school is way better off at twenty-five percent of a much larger number. Then the school would be getting one hundred percent of CAUV rates, what is a very small number, and we saw with with Doug's presentation earlier. The 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 one point four million would replace what would be the equivalent of thirty-five thousand. So it's a similar, it's a similar ratio, I think, could be even better because this is this is payment on lieu. From from a from a finance standpoint, of course, residents benefit every time, every time there's there's additional. Funding that comes in because we were talking about that twenty mil floor. The ordinary taxpayer bill will go down because the county auditor has to re-figure that levy. Every time there's a change in in those in those values. And so that 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 just benefits less of a load for everybody else to carry, the way I the way I look at it, so. New Albany, on the other hand, they're right at the the district's door. They have acquired a property. Across on the east side of Mink Street. And that property, it's the farm right at Mink and Beaver Road, and it abuts the district. And on there on the north and south side of Beaver, right at Mink. And it abuts the district and if they acquire one more property to east, they are in our district. That's why Mr. Schmidt indicated that we're looking to. Get with the new, the city of New Albany and find out what in the world their plans are. Now, they don't know completely because the New Albany Company, which isn't the city of New Albany. Doesn't always share with the city, contrary to what a lot of people think. Sometimes the city is last to know what New Albany Development Company's plans are. They'll fall online fast enough. But that's that's just huge and there's just gonna be ongoing development. I'd like to thank Jeff Wiggins on short notice for. We're sitting in on on that meeting, really, that was the the kickoff of the. Group that we talked about at our last minute meeting forming, the the the, I don't, I don't know that we have a firm name for it, Mr. Schmidt, but. But it's basically, we we we're starting a committee that's gonna look at development across the district. But obviously the hotspot right now is is right there in Jersey Township where New Albany is expanding and now this this joint, this jet, so. Bill Goodman was was, lives up in Homer, he used to live in Jersey Township and is 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 gonna be a real. A real good addition. He he seems to know an awful lot of people and and know about an awful lot of projects. So I'm looking forward to that and just want to make sure the board understands that there will be an ask coming possibly at our next meeting. From Jersey Township for that twenty twenty-year seventy-five percent abatement. That the school would have to sign off on. They they could do fifteen years without school, without school district approval. Because they're a township, they'd need school district approval for that extra five years. So I want to make sure the board's prepared for that. Very good.
Thank you. And that's the end of my report.
So, that takes us to the board discussion items and. We've got a couple of things on our list. We and then want to talk about having a board workshop. It'd be a working, a work session. We used to. Have have those all the time. It wouldn't be really, if something came up, we could put. On the agenda for that because it would be technically a special meeting. We 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 could put something that was critical that needed to be approved, if there was. Somebody else resigned and we needed to fill something in real quick, we could do that kind of thing, but generally this would be. For all intents and purposes, a mini retreat to talk about. We have forty percent new board members. We talked about doing this really pre-COVID and then COVID happened and. And that kind of got in the way of we were gonna do it anyway, so we'd be looking at scheduling. I don't know exactly when, Mr. Schmidt, but.
So we're, I was hoping to be able to to maybe throw out some options in later in February, or I mean later in March. You know, a a block of time, two and a half to to three hours. Whether that would be an evening or a Saturday morning. You know, that's that's up to the to the board and availability.
Dr. Good is referenced in the agenda item. Dr. Good is our current ESC of Central Ohio. Contact, he's a former superintendent from Westerville. More recently, he's a former, I don't know. Acting superintendent from both Columbus and then and then he and then he was at Bexley for a minute. So he's got a lot of superintendent experience and has a. An ability to, I think, draw boards and administrators together and and help understand what our. How our roles are are best played out. Is that fair?
Yes, he would, he would just help facilitate the conversation so that all of us, the board members. Myself, the treasurer, Dr. Michael as well, could all be. E equal participants rather than one of us trying to lead the work, so he would just facilitate it and lead it.
His predecessor, the late Dr. George Sombor, had a similar session for us. I want to say it was back in about twenty fifteen, maybe sometime, yeah, sometime around twenty fifteen. And 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 that was, that was a very good session. George passed away a couple of years ago, right before COVID, actually. And so he was just a tremendous fan of this district and tremendous asset for us, but. Dr. Good has stepped up in his his place. Dr. Goodney pointed Dr. Good. So do we want to talk about dates tonight or are you gonna?
I can send out an email. There's no reason why we couldn't.
Without Mr. Shrock here, I don't think we can get a good, he has a work schedule that is. But I don't know what it is, so.
And are we, let me just ask, are we targeting March for this?
We have a spring break.
So if, looking at mid-March, like the the week of the fourteenth or the twenty-first. Yes, spring break is not, spring break is not until March twenty-eighth till the following week, so.
Yeah, I know a lot of the schools of Ohio State are on spring break, like before St. Patrick's Day, so, yeah, but we're not, we don't follow that calendar. And we'll respect it.
I guess I was just, that's what I was just trying to think. When our spring, when Northridge's spring.
Yeah, spring break for us would be, the last day of school would be Friday, March twenty-fifth.
I only have a few days, I guess, open, so just as a head that.
I will have Ms. Johnson work with the board to find some common dates.
She's she served notice. March might be a tough, a tough time, but we'll see.
And if it doesn't happen, I mean, we'll.
That's what I guess I'm just, maybe we should be looking at April since we have spring break in March.
I think, I think our school spring break continues in April, early.
Just that first week, just the first of April, yeah, I I will. And and since. And my dad's birthday, I have to say that too, because I'm sure he's listening from Florida tonight.
Yeah, all right, so we'll look forward to getting an email from from Ms. Johnson about dates for this potential work session. Yep, the next item is is very quick. Recently received email from Ohio School Boards Association. It brought out, that sent out their legislative platform. It's a seventeen-page document. If you click on the link, you see that it is, it's long and. They've requested that if boards want to supply them with any comments on that agenda or on that on that platform, it's a legislative agenda, but they're calling it a platform. I suppose that's what politicians call those things, but they'd like to have those in, I think, by May thirty-first. And so there's nothing critical to to discuss. If something jumped off the page, we can certainly discuss it, but. Without Mr. Shrock here, who who really heads up the legislative liaison. I think it'd be best to defer any discussion at least until next month, but that's what that's all about and. I don't know that we've ever actually done that before. I know that they've heard solicit comments before, but.
That was the first time.
But I, when I saw that, I I just scored it on and and thought that 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 we ought to at least. Consider whether there's anything we want to tell them that they're all wet on.
I would like to add a comment. The OSBA tonight started their town hall meeting every month. They're going to have it. It will be recorded, it was recorded today. It was very well done and they give legislative updates. So I did hear some, you know, they were just talking about how. You know, some of the things that have happened in the last month, the fact that we can have video. If someone can attend, we could have them call in, so there's a lot that's changed, but it was very nicely done, so I'd recommend. Either looking at next month's and scheduling that, it was less than an hour. And and then this.
It won't always be on board meeting night either.
Right, exactly, so and it's being recorded, so you could always take a quick look at.
You recommended it. And so really, an unscheduled item, but over the weekend, I saw an email from OSBA's lobbyist. Or no, it was actually, I I saw an email from a law firm that's on our, that's on our list, the. Pepel and Wagner Law Firm sent out just a a quick update. That, as Jamie alluded to a minute ago, House Bill fifty-one was signed by the governor and. Because it had an emergency provision in it, it became effective immediately, and what that does is reinstate the ability of. Public boards, including boards of education, to meet virtually. That that had been granted early in COVID, it was extended at some point. Expired last June thirtieth, I believe it was, then when Omicron started going crazy, they. Put this into the legislation, of course, the numbers now are way down, but the governor went ahead and signed the legislation. And so, for example, had we known in time, we probably could have, if Mr. Shrock was able, he maybe could have participated virtually. But the Pepel and Wagner information, and I understand OSBA's information. Was was in line with this, strongly recommends that that you look at your policy. And you make sure that your policy permits, and I don't know exactly where our policy is and we'd have to look carefully at the law to make sure because. Our new members may or may not be aware, but during during the COVID period, when we were permitted to meet virtually and did meet virtually. We were under the, operating under the understanding that that everybody had to participate in the same way. And so, because in our district, as Mr. Wiggins can attest better than most. Video isn't necessarily something that's that's available to everybody in the district equally or close to equally, maybe at all. We made the choice to stream our board meetings on on the Facebook, on the on the Facebook page, but. While we conducted them by Zoom, we only used the audio portion. We did not use video at all. Because everybody has to be able to see each other or nobody could, is the way we understood the law, and so. I don't know where we stand now with with that, if they made any changes to it, if there's another interpretation now, but but before we would be able to patch somebody in. We would need to make sure that either they could participate via video or. Make sure that it was okay for them to be audio on, but if there's interest in, I don't think we would want to go to. You know, I don't want to presume that we wouldn't want to go to virtual meetings, but I I personally would not be inclined to go to virtual meetings based on. The current state of of the virus. Now, if it flared and all of a sudden in May, it's it's going crazy again, I'm sure we'd consider that, but I I wouldn't think that unless. Things return to like they were in in December, that we would even contemplate it. A total virtual meeting.
It would be really nice to have that contingency in place, though, should something happen.
Or if somebody's out of town, or you know, you could you could participate and not be absent.
Would you follow up and maybe we add that to March's agenda? We could, thank you.
It'll all be for a few meetings. This expires again June thirtieth, but but at least. At least it's available, it would be available for a period of time, and it might make a difference between being able to form or not, I mean, you just never know. And if for nothing else, you're not, just to telegraph what's coming. Before June thirtieth, in the last few days, there will be a need for at least three of us to get together. And approve next year's appropriations and sign off on the final numbers and and those can be distributed. By email very easily, and there is absolutely no reason in the world to meet personally, to spend ten minutes. Look at his documents. He can explain them, he can explain them online as easy as he can explain them in person. And frankly, it'd be easier for him, for for, and by him, I mean Brett Lewis, our treasurer. So that's coming in June, and I think that alone would make it worth doing if we can. In whatever format we can do it, and we'd be able to do it in some format, so. That was our last, that was our last virtual meeting, when we were allowed to have them before. We we did that meeting virtually and it went very well. All right, that ends our board discussion items unless somebody else has something wanting to bring forward. We've reached the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it? The form is.
All motion.
It's at the end of item seven, as you get, when you run out of seven point, seven point somethings and you get to eight, you found the little blank that that you need.
Page nine of fourteen.
We have a motion by Mrs. Krieger, seconded by Mrs. Berman, to approve the consent agenda discussion.
I first would like to thank Mrs. Hep for all that she has contributed over the years. To building our music program. It has been fabulous to watch how they have grown and how she took a small group and just. It was, it's amazing how large they've grown, from middle school, from sixth grade all the way to twelve, so I feel very honored. To have worked with her as a parent and obviously. It'll be sad that she'll be leaving.
And I think you speak for the board with those comments.
I do, I hope.
And we also want to wish. Yeah, Mrs. Shanner, Shanner, we want to wish her well. As she goes on. With her personal issues that she has to deal with. There's no further discussion of our consent agenda items. Lewis, please call the roll.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Passes for zero. Now, we had no items removed, so. Eight is moot, nine separate consideration items. Mr. Schmidt, would you care to introduce those for us?
Yeah, we have three different items. I'll start out with nine point one first, which is approval or really recognition of indoor track and field as a winter sport. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year for this school year, so this is not establishing this as. A sport, but. An ongoing sport, thank you, not establishing it as an ongoing sport. In the past, when we have had athletes who have made it to the state competition. In order to participate in the state competition, the board needs to recognize that that they are a team that represents Northridge, so. This is our our approval that we have three, three individuals. Question myself, it might be four. We have at least three individuals who are gonna be competing at the state level, so we need this rep.
And they're able to do their qualifications for these tournaments individually outside of school, because tracks are very individual sport.
Yeah, indoor, the indoor track, you know, we we do not pay, actually, Mr. Feather and Guild as well as other. Coaches all volunteer to support these kids, so it's it's not a paid coaching position. And no, no money involved in this approval, just just the recognition that they can compete as Northridge students.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. A motion to approve that would be in order. Actually, move to approve it. Actually moved to approve it. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wiggins. Motion by myself, second by Mr. Wiggins to approve the indoor track and field as a winter sport for the current school year. There's uh, no discussion of this item. Um, Mr. Lewis, please call the roll.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
And the motion passes four zero. Now, nine point two, Mr.
Nine point two is approving a resolution to authorize the transfer of monies from bond retirement fund to. Uh, our specific permanent improvement fund. Uh, it's a total of two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Two hundred and sixty-six thousand fifty-five dollars and seventy cents. Um, that is in the bonds uh, fund from when the high school. Uh, was built and middle school renovations were done. And this is moving it to an active fund. For appropriation purposes, if there's any other further questions, I'll defer to the treasurer.
So this is a fairly standard thing, right, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, this is, yes, this is the the remaining funds, either have to pay back a bond that's already paid off, or put into the permanent improvement funds. So that this will go into per- permanent improvement, and but it has to also be approved by the county. So.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
And is there? Krieger. Motion by Mrs. Berman, second by Mr. Krieger to approve recommendation nine point two. The resolution which is uh. Rather likely in single space written out in the text. Any discussion? Here nine, Mr. Lewis, call the roll, please.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
The motion passes. Four zero.
I'm very excited. I've been trying to get this done since two thousand nineteen. I went back and looked at all the emails with the attorneys. It's great to get this done.
And it's good to have it done. And Mr. Schmidt.
You did great.
Uh, nine point three is approval uh, issuing of a request for proposals for potential future construction projects. Uh, you'll see in the recommend, recommended action there, approve the superintendent and treasurer to issue a request for proposal. Known as an RFP, uh, for potential future construction projects, uh, using a design build delivery model. Uh, those potential projects could include um, completion of an updated master facility plan. Uh, renovations and or additions to the middle school, high school, outdoor athletic facilities, including stadium facilities. Uh, indoor athletic facilities, uh, and a district office. All projects are potential few. All projects are potential future projects, and we'd be subject to board approval, identification of funding. And it's anticipated that they would be completed in phases over time. Uh, Mr. Hart had alluded to the request for proposal that uh, was currently issued in two thousand sixteen. Actually included all of these items except for an outdoor uh, athletic facility stadium. So it's just restating everything that's part of there. The other piece that was part of that. Uh, RFP was obviously the construction of a new elementary school, uh, which we have successfully completed, so.
That's how incomprehensible. Yeah, the possibility of this project is that we didn't even include, didn't even think of including that.
So, uh, and also, as as Mr. Hart mentioned earlier, our current contract with Robertson was written in a way to allow us to do. Future projects, the lawyers and a a system of checks and balances to to Mr. Hart's credit, who said like. Can we have the lawyers weigh in on that? Uh, when they went back to look at the RFP from two thousand sixteen, said. It it doesn't say the outdoor athletic facilities. Um, there have been some recent. Activity in the courts with procurement. Process. Um, and so we just want to make sure that we're dyeing our i's, crossing our t's. Uh, and and working through that. So this is the first step in moving forward in any potential project that requests for proposals.
And and as we say, then from there, I mean, a- any any work that actually gets done will be done by these, this contract with Addenda. Similar to the way we did the 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 previous, the 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 pre, the pre-K five. And uh, other other work that has been done under that contract, and I I think then that this would. Presumably supersede that contract, uh, even where we go forward with Robertson. Would that be your understanding, Clay? That that would either supersede or amend and restate perhaps, I mean, the the lawyers will figure out how to.
Right.
How to put it all together, so. Um, and I think I think it makes a whole lot of sense. I I move that we uh, that we move forward with with this. Understanding that that it's it's it's, all it's doing is is. Asking for proposals. Uh, we're not approving any money expenditure at this point.
Um, I just thought of something. Is it possible?
I've got a, I've got a motion.
Yep.
Uh, is there a second?
I'll take a second.
Okay. Now, go ahead, Ms. Berman.
All right. Thinking of what we just talked about and how in two thousand sixteen we didn't include everything. I am wondering if we could add the word. Renovations and or additions to the middle school and high school. We do not talk about the elementary school. And in twenty years, there could be something that we we need to address at the elementary school. Is it possible we could add elementary into this? It is PI. I'm thinking of the PI money and how things could come up.
Clay has a thought.
So the other thought with intel and new Albany and everything else, there's no.
I think if we get to that point, we're gonna have to. We're gonna have to, I I I don't think, I don't think we want to go so far as to. Make it that broad. I think that that we would be looking at then. It could be soon, but I don't think it'll be real soon. Look, looking like we're trying to 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 take care of everything all once today, when that's not the intent, the intent is to. Get everything done that we that we can see today, but this is something, I appreciate that thought.
The the intent and and kind of speaking to the additions or or renovations at elementary. The intent of this request for proposals would be kind of a succession of. Of potential projects in the next five years type, type.
Okay, so we're thinking five year, not a twenty year PI. I'm thinking of the PI. Is sorry.
We can. It it, I guess. Sure.
Well, I was also, I sat there and thought, well, do we want to add the PI fund in here, which would cover. Then the elementary, the middle school and high school, or we could just add the word elementary, middle and high school. I think either kind of covers. Something that we might need assistance with.
So you want to just add elementary, comma, middle school and high school?
It's open for discussion.
Everything scary about that is, is that to me, and I thought about, when I read it, I thought the same thing. The thing that bothered me about adding elementary is, we just built it. And it almost looks like we, and we built it to allow growth.
Yeah, we did.
So it almost looks like we didn't.
I think that needs to be more transparent, if there ever is, if there's a reason anytime soon to do something on the elementary building.
We should be.
Um, it needs to be, it needs to be, it 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 needs to be very uh, clear that that we have that going on.
I know, because I I also know before. It it would take some discussion before we added on to the. The elementary or middle school to discuss, or before we add on the elementary to to kind of revisit. What the needs are specifically, like if our preschool program continues to grow or focus around. Early literacy, early literacy with kindergarten, it could be that. It's more feasible to create a a pre, an area for preschool, which would then open up classrooms at the elementary level, so. Uh, that's gonna, that's gonna take.
You're talking about.
That's a brand new project.
Yeah, which gets back to Clay's point. Doesn't say new.
That was what was running through my mind was, I think the goal's in the right place, but I think the perception might be off.
Right.
Um, you know, one of the things I really don't want people walking away from this meeting saying, oh, they're adding on to the elementary school. That's not what's happening here. Yeah, I I I struggle with that. That piece of it, like I said, I think the thought's in the right place, but I think that it could be perceived incorrectly. And I don't know what value, if the value that it brings us exceeds the negative perception that we could get from misreading that. Am I anywhere close?
So so issuing, the the process of issuing an RFP is not. An overly taxing process.
Having gone through this discussion, hopefully we'll remember.
Yes.
At the time, um, that that there is this uh, limit.
Yeah.
Yes, if we get, if, yeah, we will.
Yeah, we will remember that, we will remember that.
Those not allow new.
So wait a minute.
Well, you guys, new would be a new district office.
That's what I'm saying, that's new building. Just add the word new somewhere.
Well, I don't think we should. I'm just saying that. If you're talking about a district.
We're talking about a new soccer state, or a new, a new stadium, too, and that's that's clear enough in here.
Yeah.
In terms of a new school building.
Yeah, I don't want it to cover a new school building. I was really, where my head. My thoughts were, is the permanent improvement, if there's anything in there that we would like. Design build assistance with anything in there.
I think that's already covered in the other contract, though.
Well, I thought this was replacing. That's why I was asking.
What what will happen is the contract that we end up with.
Okay.
Will. We took probably.
We took the opportunity with this RFP to restate the items that that. Were in the previous RFP and include the stadium. The only thing that was admitted was a new.
If we go a different, if we went, if we went a different direction, if somebody else were to be selected, we'd have the existing contract that would continue.
Okay, for the PI stuff.
Right.
I'm okay with that. Okay, then, we're good.
Well stated. Thanks.
That's all, that's.
That's a great discussion, great, great points, great considerations. Uh, is there anything else? If not, um, Mr. Lewis, please call the roll.
Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. All right, and so we renumbered current, ten on the paper to number eleven and. Eleven becomes ten and uh, at this point. We had one person request to speak. Um, that would be uh, Jindal Duffner. Um, regarding the failure of public education. And I believe it's subjects being taught in school. Is that, is that right, Mrs. Duffner? And um, I I'd mentioned to you before the meeting, I just make sure. I'd stated at the last, stated at the last meeting about uh, the 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 policy that provides for five minutes and. Um, we'd had some, we'd had some recommendations or some 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 concerns expressed that were going on too long. I I, tonight, we've gone on pretty long anyway. Um, but but I think we have a timer, I think we have a timer on the screen there that hopefully you can see. And we have a thirty-minute warning that was suggested by somebody at the last meeting, one of our speakers that. Uh, rather than interrupting them during their, during their, during their talk. Uh, they'd be able to uh, they'd be able to uh, they'd do better if it was just clock that they could see and and the signs, so we went with that. So. So podium is yours.
All right.
Button, yeah, there's a white button there.
It's on.
Very good.
Ohio ranks thirty-fifth out of the fifty states in education, and two thousand eighteen, Ohio dropped from a C to a D rating. Northridge has a six out of a ten rating, which its lowest rating is in math, and the bottom fifty percent, which is the lower than the state ranks in the whole. The policies of our public school system, education have been a disappointment. Even with the continued failure of well-funded public school systems. The teachers' unions and the educational representatives continue to go down the rabbit hole, which has proven to be a result in zero. Education success of our children. This past January, the American Federation of Teachers Union, the AFT. Teamed up with a profit, for-profit fact-checking group called NewsGuard. The AFT bought NewsGuard licenses for one point seven million teachers to share with tens of millions of students around the country. The AFT claims they are purchasing NewsGuard to help students spot out disinformation. NewsGuard is far from a trusted source with a huge rap sheet of political lobbying money. And a board consisting of sleazy, far-bias office holders like Mr. Duncan, a supporter of pedophilia. AFT is also a strong, strongly biased and uses deep pocket, pockets of over seventy mi- seventy-nine million. Of it to donate to far-left political parties and organizations. This disgusts me, and I can't be, can't be any more evident. That our public school systems are not concerned with improving educational learning skills. Also, this move has nothing to do with bettering education of adolescents. And will do nothing to benefit the centralized way, that do nothing but benefit centralized way of thinking. Why not just tell our kids to to get their facts from Facebook, no different? Parents' faith in public school systems continue to plummet, and these dictor- dictatorial moves by teacher unions only prove why parents are fed up. When political special interest groups are making decisions on what our kids are told is fact, no wonder they are so ill-informed. To make my point on a state-local level, on January fourth of this year, the Newark Da- Newark Daily Times reported on. Ohio Public announcing they are suing Ohio Public School System in in hopes to eliminate the school voucher programs. If succeed, they would mean the end of the ED Choice Scholarship Program that helps forty-two thousand Ohio children. The reason for this program is because of the failing school system. The Ohio Public School Board claims the voucher program is hurting the school district baloney. Spending has increased fifty percent in the past twenty-five years for the public school system. And that doesn't count for the twelve billion, which was spent on tobacco money on school buildings. Sad to our state, board is so focused on taking away school choice for our parent, for for parents. Instead of looking at themselves in the mirror to fix the mess they have created with their horrible policies. Now for the issue of a local school level. On December third, I became aware of a disturbing class project, which was thankfully posted. In progress book in my daughter's ELA class. I took my concerns to the teacher and the superintendent by e- uh, sending an email. Yes, Mr. Schmidt has heard my concerns and took this time to speak with me. But I have not heard back on whether or not this assignment would be eliminated in the future, so I'm expressing this to the board today. My daughter was told to do a summary on success, but a Barack Obama speech on success was used as the golden lesson. And the guidance that my teach, my daughter had to listen to in order to successfully finish the project. I am appalled by the school system using political figures to mentor my children. Mr. Obama is a far-left political figure who knows nothing about struggles and challenges of becoming successful. He is a paid politician, political figure whose only motive is to stay in power and reward his donors. We live in a country that has produced millions of successful people from all walks of life. Beautiful stories of victorious, victorious struggles they had to overcome to get where they are today, with no help. From mil- million-dollar political donors. Why not use their voices and their stories? I have a request from the board today. I would like to see a motion. To make it mandatory for all teachers to report their curriculum in progress book. With a contact email for parents to be, to ask questions, so they can relay their concerns about controver- controversial subjects. As in dating for twelve-year-olds. As this would be followed by a mass email to all families about progress book. And how we can closely monitor what is being taught in each one of our classrooms, along with the grades and missing work. Even alerts can be programmed in progress book. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duffner. All right, that takes us to business initiated by members of the board. We don't have anything uh, pre-identified. Does anyone have anything they wanted to bring forward tonight? And we have announcements to make. Do we have any announcements tonight? Right, you got anything uh we need to know?
I just wanted to put a little plug. I think Dr. Michael already sort of touched on it, but tomorrow night the varsity basketball, the boys play home at seven, so there I'm sure would love support. I'm really sad that I won't make it, but I just thought I'd put it out there so that anyone that didn't realize that it's their first tournament game.
First tournament.
Yep.
Very good. Further announcements?
Um, the musical, high school musical will be before our next board meeting.
It will. It will be, yes.
Um, it's the tenth. Not on my calendar.
It is, yeah, Friday, March eleventh and Saturday, March twelfth and and Sunday, March thirteenth. The musical, since you since you bring it, the musical that they're doing this year is SpongeBob SquarePants the Musical. For those people that are fans of SpongeBob, you will like that. For those of you who are not fans of SpongeBob, I would still encourage you to come see it because it's not, it's not the cartoon. Um, they use they use the cartoon stories, but for someone who had kids who watched it often, I was, I thought, oh, what are we getting ourselves into? But the music is written by Cyndi Lauper and Lin-Manuel and a whole list of of uh different um artists and uh it's really amazing, an amazing show, so don't let the title scare you away.
Perfect.
What date did we say this is?
Uh, March eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth.
Very good. Any additional announcements?
I guess one announcement just to save us when we get to future meetings. The Academic Excellence Committee normally meets the last Wednesday of the month, which would be tomorrow, which snuck up on me. And so we we're not really prepared for a meeting tomorrow night, so we're gonna have to reschedule that. We'd also, there's been a request to potentially look at a different night other than Wednesday nights to have the meeting to accommodate some committee members. So we will work to get that scheduled, but um somehow or other, the third, the third Monday and the last Wednesday all ended up.
Same week.
And the same week.
Very good.
Okay.
I thought I had more time.
Well, reaffirm the time and place of our next Board of Education meeting. That is uh Monday, March twenty-first. We're back to Mondays finally. Twenty twenty-two, that'll be at six thirty PM right here in the district office. Uh, we'll be in touch about scheduling a uh work session. Our time and place for our next committee meetings, as Mr. Schmidt just indicated, the Academic Excellence Committee will be uh rescheduled apparently. The Finance Committee will meet Wednesday, March eleventh, six o'clock right here in the office and via Zoom. Or March ninth, I'm sorry. Uh, and Facilities Committee will be meeting Wednesday, March second, six PM, also district office and on Zoom. Finance Committee is a public meeting. The uh Facilities Committee um is is not. So that concludes our public session. Is there a reason to go into executive session tonight?
I would like to um ask for to go into executive session for consideration of an appointment employment promotion, demotion, compensation of an employee or official. Matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or state law and um details related to security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the school.
Very good. Mrs. Berman, for the reasons stated, I'll second that. Mr. Lewis, if you'll call a roll. Mr. Wiggins.
Yes.
Mr. Hart. Yes. Mrs. Krieger.
Yes.
Mrs. Berman.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero. Need help with time because my phone won't put.
It's eight fifty-nine.
We are entering executive session at eight fifty-nine PM. But before we do, is it possible that we'll go an hour? I would hope not.
Gosh, no.
Because I I we're gonna deal with curfew, we could deal with it right now, but I don't think we'll need to, so.
I'd like to be home.
So we'll commit to not going. I I fifteen minutes, I hope we'll handle it, right?
I'm hoping.
All right, so we're entering executive session at eight fifty-nine PM. No decision is expected coming out of executive session. Right?
Correct.
Thank you, everyone, for your attendance and uh have a safe trip home. Probably colder out there now than it was when we arrived here.